Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 2, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Let's adopt this evening's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda, second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Novak to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. We're looking at the minutes from the April 18 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Move to approve the said minutes?
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Grischoviac to approve the minutes from the April 18, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening, and the first one is to accept a deed for real property Foley Boulevard near Coon Rapids Boulevard. This is an HRA-acquired parcel down on Foley and Coon Rapids Boulevard that was subdivided to prepare a lot for the new water tower. So, the, okay, I'll read this because I skipped over a bunch of stuff. I was trying, in the interest of, all right. "The HRA acquired an approximately five-acre property located at the southwest corner of Foley Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard in 2018 to preserve options for future transportation improvements consistent with its redevelopment and economic development priorities. As plans for additional on- and off-ramps to Highway 610 were developed over the last few years, it was determined that the HRA-owned property is no longer needed for transportation purposes. Instead, city staff determined the property was an optimal site for a new water tower. On April 4, the city council awarded a contract for construction of the water tower and approved a final plat for the property. The plat creates two lots, Lot 1, Block 1 Water Tower Edition, and Lot 2, Block 1 Water Tower Edition. Lot 1 is about 1.4 acres in size and will be conveyed from the HRA to the city for construction of the water tower. Lot 2 is about 3.6 acres in size and will be retained by the HRA for the time being with the intent of eventually selling it for private development. The HRA will consider conveyance of Lot 1 at its April 18 meeting, which was already done, provided the HRA authorizes conveyance. The council is asked to accept the deed, and the HRA did that, so we're looking to accept the deed from the HRA for Lot 1, Block 1, Water Tower Edition."
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I make a motion.
Wait, we're in the middle of the consent agenda.
Oh.
Otherwise, that would have been perfect.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought maybe you had a question.
I got lost. No, I apologize.
All right, the second, sorry, the second item under our consent agenda, which is item three on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-60, approving Sustainability Commission appointment. Kate Anderson submitted an application for the Sustainability Commission. After discussion with the applicant, the Sustainability Commission voted to recommend Kate Anderson's appointment to fill a vacancy with a term ending December 31, 2023. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-60, appointing Kate Anderson to the Sustainability Commission. Councilmember Rayrower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I would just like to make a comment on this real property at Foley Boulevard for the water tower. I just want to say that the HRA did a great job in 2018 when we acquired that property from Shamrock. We bought it at a good price. We're going to be able to build that water tower basically on a piece of property that we're really getting, almost essentially going to get for free when we come to market that property, so just glad to see that that piece of property moved along the way it did. No longer needed for the possible ramp up onto 610, so good use.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. We're up to item four, to consider a contract for the 2023 Street Maintenance Program, Project 23-5. Mr. Hammer, anything you want to hit on in that?
No, Mr. Mayor, council, this is our annual program for the North Metro Street Maintenance Consortium. There's roughly a dozen different cities up in this area. We get together to pool our quantities and try to get quantity of scale. So with all of these cities, we have crack ceiling, seal coating, lines, or pavement markings, trail fogging, parking lot fogging. So we've followed our process. We've given the opt-out opportunities. All the contracts are in order. We had some good competitive bidding. It seems to always be the usual customers, although Sir Lines a lot does not get to be part of the recommendation, so I apologize on that one. Other than that, it is good numbers for the city and our consortium. We're getting ready to kick it off. It is construction season, and so with that, I would make the recommendation. There's multiple contracts in here, and as noted, some of them have changed based upon the quantities that the other cities either added or opted out on, which is allowed within the joint powers agreement. So there are a total of five contracts to be awarded. I won't go through each of those numbers, but I would recommend we award those as proposed.
Mr. Hammer, how specific are our proposals? And the reason I'm asking is I'm looking at, for example, pavement markings, and the winning bid is like 50% less than the other one. You got a, the winning bid is $227,000, and this, and there was only other one other bid, and it was $323,000. I mean, it's same paint, same thickness, all of that's the same.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's unit prices or unit quantities for each thing, so we lay out whether it's tape, or paint, or color, thickness of the lines, all the specifications are the same. It just comes down to workforce and maybe their ability to deliver. I mean, there are plenty of contracts out there. Maybe they've got other ones, and so this is maybe not the highest priority.
Okay, yeah, and it was also the same with crack ceiling. There were more bids that time. There was like six bids, but you get a difference between $440,000 and over a million dollars. And it's, I just, I thought, is it, they really just don't want the work? Or, I just wanted to make sure everybody's got the same, same apple on the card.
Everyone gets the same bid, the same bid tab. What we find is, from year to year, we get new people that come along to bid it, and they're not familiar with the program, and they'll either try to undercut it and realize that there's more to it than that, or they come in and they're super high, and then they start to figure out how did we miss it by that much. So it's usually the same two or three that come around every year because they've done it for so long. They know the process, and others are just trying to learn and figure it out. But same requirements, same specifications, same bidding documents for all of them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt the following resolutions, second.
Well, I don't know.
Here they come.
Patience, patience.
Resolution number 23-5 sub 9A, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for bituminous seal coating in the base bid amount of $260,918.34, and the alternate amount of $260,918.34. Resolution number 23-5 sub 9B, awarding a contract to warning lights for pavement markings, the amount of $228,366.36. Resolution number 23-5 sub 9C, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for crack sealing in the amount of $430,892.12. Resolution number 23-5 sub 9D, awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for fog sealing streets in the amount of $221,913.50. And resolution number 23-5 sub 9E, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for fog sealing trails and parking lots in the amount of $104,068.20.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carlson and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that to all of the people who've been contacting me and probably all of you, this is what we needed to get in order to actually get the streets fixed. We understand that's been a problem. It was a very rough winter, but this is the funding that we needed to do in order to get that to happen. So I just want to make that clear to everyone out there.
Well, this, this actually does the maintenance to protect us in future years.
Yeah.
We're already out there doing all the hot patch coating as part of our maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think you would still consider it maintenance, but this is more our preservation maintenance. This is our seal coating and our fog sealing and.
So that next winter, we won't have to do as much in the spring.
Well, we're still, well.
Hopefully.
It'll just depend what the winter is like. This was a horrendous winter.
Snow, snow, snow.
For the streets.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, and to me, it's just, again, I want to thank Mr. Hammer, our Public Works Director. That this is a consortium, what is it, up to 12 cities now?
Right.
That we lead, and we then take all of their work and we bid it as a group so we can all benefit from the pricing. You know, those cities do pay us a nice little fee to help do the administration and management of it, but because we all work together as a partnership, it helps us all. And so I just want to say thank you for the leadership and doing that, because it helps our city be more fiscally responsible in this necessary work.
All right, other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Under new business, item five is to consider planning case 23-11, consider preliminary and final plat, Fidelity Edition Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC. This is, oh, this is the, yeah, the car wash, the Con Barbeque property. All right. Dakota, did you already, you already did a presentation on this, didn't you? Or am I just thinking of watching?
Planning Commission, yeah. I have, if it's helpful to have the maps or anything on the screen, otherwise happy to answer any questions, or if you want me to hit some highlights, I can do that as well.
Okay. Does anybody want to see this, or does anybody, is everybody familiar with it? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I'm familiar with it, but I don't think we've seen it, so I wouldn't mind hitting the highlights.
Okay. Dakota, you want to?
Yeah.
Roll out an abbreviated dog in front of the show?
Yeah, so the preliminary and final plat we're talking about tonight is the site at 2085 Northdale Boulevard, the former Con's Restaurant. There's a, the site plan that was approved in November for the Silver Star Car Wash that'll be developed on the eastern half of the site. Through that site planning process, the applicant had indicated that they wanted to do some kind of plat or lot split in the future, knowing that the car wash wasn't going to occupy that whole site, and see if they could sell some additional land for future commercial development. So that's what this, this plat is, is just to kind of help create two parcels. So on the eastern half will be the Silver Star Car Wash, and then on this kind of western half that you see outlined in blue here, will be made available for future commercial development. The applicant hasn't indicated that there's any specific proposal at this time, but they provided a kind of an example site plan of a smaller commercial building with a drive-through that could fit on that site. There is a utility and drainage easement that kind of goes across that parcel, and I know that was kind of raised with the planning commission, if there was any concern about development there. And this area highlighted here shows that there's still about a 20,000 square foot area that a building pad could go to still meet the setbacks and be out of all of those drainage and utility easements there. So I don't think from planning staff we had any concern there. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Oh.
Question?
Uh, no. Your Honor, for?
Oh, hey, let's finish this.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Geisler.
Dakota, could you go back, yeah, this one. And to me, I know it's one of the recommendations, but I think we just want to make sure that everybody at home is clear that there's going to be a cross-access easement that's going to be required with this new split to be able to, so people will have to go through that Silverstone Car Wash lot to get to this other lot. There will not be another access out onto Northdale.
Yeah, that is correct. So, yeah, there'll be the signalized intersection here that they would access. Silver Star is building this kind of frontage road in front, and that's how you would access this, the site that would be available for development.
Okay, and so I just want to make sure that people saw, because they're going to hear like the cross-access agreement, and they, just to know what it is.
Yep, yeah, thanks for, yeah, thanks for that clarification.
So, do we, how wide is that little frontage road they're putting in then? I mean, is that a, is that a, just curious?
Yeah, it's 24 feet, which is our minimum requirement for two-way traffic, so it'll be the 24 feet there.
So no, no place for parking or stopping, just keep her moving?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, no parking allowed there on that street.
It's too small for a mini storage. Unlikely it'll be another car wash, so maybe we'll get something different.
I think so, I think so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
As far as the future development, is the current, the current plan to have it go off that frontage road into the next property, or is there any chance they're going to be looking at trying to put an entrance into that second property?
It'd be really unlikely because of Northdale, that's an Anoka County road, and so it would need their approval. And I think through the, the site plan process with Silver Star, they were kind of against that or suggested not. And so that's where this kind of frontage road and kind of forcing people at the already signalized intersection will help, help with that circulation and access there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
Dakota, just to clarify, that's still going to be owned by Silver Star. It's not coming to the city.
Correct. Well, so, yeah, Silver Star will own the lot that the car wash is being developed, and then they're going to sell that other portion to a private developer for that, that development. So that was also part of this, too, of why they wanted to go through the plat processes to be able to sell that parcel off for, for another developer.
Just for the record, if anyone's listening, I live close there. If they want to put a donut shop there?
Still leaves, leaves a spot for a 20,000 square foot area for the building pad. That's a pretty big donut shop.
Yeah, well, I'll still have to meet our parking requirements and stuff, too, so I don't think a 20,000 square foot building will work there, but, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Rayrower, did you have something to say?
For planning case 23-11, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and adopt Resolution 23-61 granting final plat approval, with the condition the applicant provide a copy of a shared cross-access agreement to city staff.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Novak. Thank you for being ready, I didn't. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Just wondering, on the, on the lot that's going to remain, the one to the left, did they give you any indication of, of how they're going to clean that up? Is it going to be prepared for sale as a site? I know that where that old Burger King was, that really looked kind of crummy for a long time, and I'm just wondering how this is going to look in the interim.
Yeah, no, thanks for that question. That was something, through the site plan process, staff raised some concern around, so they are going to sod that area as one of their conditions on that lot. And then they are fully enclosing their site with curb, which wasn't part of their original proposal, and that we added that condition to in case it sits vacant for some time, that we're not creating issues where people can access that site, or hopefully are, are going to be dumping things on that site. So in the meantime, it'll kind of just be sodded and probably have a for-sale sign out there until it gets developed.
Okay, and for clarification, was the Burger King was the building that was closer to Hanson Boulevard? Was it Hardee's?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to say, we still have a Burger King.
I saw the look. I better clarify. No, thank you for that. That was my question, only concern.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And then I suppose you're just going to stay right there, aren't you?
Yeah.
All right, item six then is to consider introduction of an ordinance rezoning Cedarwood, 9730 University Avenue Northwest.
All right, yeah, so tonight, we're looking, applicants requesting approval to change the zoning of the subject property from low-density residential 2 to high-density residential. So the parcel we're talking about here is 9730 University Ave. It's about .91 acres, and it did contain a vacant single-family home that's since been raised on that site. And so this, this rezoning is kind of in partnership with a site plan for an eight-unit development called Cedarwood. Each unit would have three bedrooms, three, two and a half baths, a privacy deck, and a two-car garage. So the site plan was unanimously approved by the planning commission at its last meeting, and so just wanted to kind of have it here as a reference, just so you kind of see how the building would lay out on the site. And so then tonight, just wanted to go over the, the rezoning portion itself and kind of go through those three criteria again that you all are asked to kind of think about when it comes to rezoning cases. So first, looking at the effect of the rezoning on public health, safety, order, and general welfare. Staff, you know, this parcel was used for residential purposes. This rezoning would maintain that residential and kind of bring it in a closer density and intensity to the surrounding parcel, and so staff felt like there wasn't any major concerns with the rezoning there. Looking at the rezoning on present and potential surrounding land uses, there's currently office zoning to the north, general commercial to the south, and high-density residential to the south, and those properties are at about 12.5 units an acre. And then to the west here, it's currently a planned unit development that has closer to that moderate residential density at six units an acre. And then to the east is the city of Blaine, where they have single-family housing. And so through this, you know, staff saw that this is really kind of a low-density residential parcel kind of sandwiched in between commercial and office and some of these higher intensity uses and higher density, and felt like this, this rezoning kind of brings this parcel into more alignment with the surrounding area. With the eight units on this property, it would bring this parcel to nine units an acre, so kind of in the middle of kind of what's surrounding it there in that, in that range. And then the future land use map does designate this parcel as commercial mixed use that we felt, again, kind of gives us some more support, I think a recognition that it was probably unlikely that this parcel would remain a single-family home way into the future and in the long term, and having more flexibility for higher-density residential uses or commercial uses at this site. And then finally, the, the third piece I think about is the, whether the rezoning is compliant with our land use plan. And staff, again, we felt like there is policy support in our 2040 plan to rezone this parcel. As I mentioned, it was designated commercial mixed use in our future land use map, again, with the acknowledgement that the site would probably unlikely remain a single-family home in the long term. And again, a lot of our land use policies are focusing more on redevelopment priorities, changes to residential densities, and infill development, which this, this project really kind of aligns. And then there were some specific land use and housing policies there that we, staff felt like just provide a little additional support on the rezoning. So the recommendation tonight is to introduce the proposed rezoning, and then this would come to you all on the May 16 meeting for final adoption. And then in addition, there would be a separate agenda item related to the building materials on this project to get some council approval on. So happy to answer any questions. We also have the applicant here if you have any questions as well.
Dakota, they currently own a similar development on University, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So that's what this image is here, kind of just south of the property on 97th and University. There's kind of two, I guess, kind of row home or town home developments, pretty much the same kind of footprint that is owned by the Valley Homes LLC as well.
And, and those have been there for at least 12 years?
Yeah, that, that sounds right. I think maybe when I was looking through old planning files, like 2004, I think is when they got their approvals. So, yeah, that would make sense.
And, and those have been a good fit. We haven't had any issues as far as police calls or anything, or, because we're really looking at doing the same thing again.
Sure. Mayor, council, I don't know, I'll kind of remind you that that's something we could provide council in the meantime, as this is an introduction, so if that's.
They just seem like they've just always been there, and it hasn't been any issue, and I was just.
I'm not aware of anything that, yeah, that would indicate that, but we can verify.
Okay, and the ones you want to build are going to be similar to this?
Yeah, it's based on that, just improved wider and larger, brand-new, luxury-type family community. And, yeah, that's kind of where the concept and the inspiration came from those.
I'm sorry, if it's going to be many more things, we left you, come out of the mic. Because right now, everybody at home is going, what's going on? All 11 of them, you know, so, all right. Okay, anybody have any questions, Dakota, on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I just know that I won't be here on the 16th, but I want to be able to make sure that, you know, when we look at what's around this, I mean, it does not make sense to leave this parcel as, as single-family, you know. And, you know, our, our moderate density goes up to, I believe, eight units an acre. This is nine, you know, and so it's just slightly above moderate, you know. So to me, it's what fits on that site, and I know that this is just the introduction, so I would hope that it's a positive outcome in a couple of weeks.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Just to clarify, Dakota, I didn't hear, is this property for rent or to buy?
Yeah, so the, the proposal is for rental properties, but then it's the long-term goal for Value Homes LLC, that they would maintain this long, long term. They're not looking to just build it and then sell it to make a quick buck. They manage this property and a number of other properties in the area, and so this was just to be, to add some rental units and, under their kind of long-term management.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I think Councilmember Geisler kind of anticipating my pushback on changing ordinance and moving into, creating more high-density residential. So thanks, because I was going to ask, what's the difference between moderate and high-density residential, so that you clarified that question. Back to the zoning map, if you could flip that back on, could you tell me the parcel 27-27, I guess, to the south of there, and then 97-31, those two, right, are those, are the, is that high-density residential right there?
Yeah, so those are currently zoned high-density residential. I believe each of those parcels has a fourplex on them, but because the, those units are pretty, or the parcels themselves are pretty small when you do the calculation, it's at that 12.5 units an acre.
Okay, so to fit this project on parcel 9730, it has to be zoned high versus moderate?
Yeah, that is correct. In our current zoning code, that moderate density is kind of identified between four and seven units an acre, and anything greater than seven is under our high-density residential. And so here with this, this proposal, it's at nine units an acre, which is where that high-density rezoning would come in.
Mr. Carl, in the, in the POD section that's outlined there in blue, I know it's governed by the PUD, but is it, that would be, is that high in there, or is that moderate or low?
Yeah, so it's currently the, like, underlying zoning is low-density residential 2, but it's in a PUD that allowed for a little bit higher density, and so there, on that development that's outlined in blue, that's at six units an acre there.
Okay, I think that answers my questions. I still oppose changing the zoning into high-density residential.
And that, that whole PUD, we wouldn't be able to do a development like that again, because those are all zero-line twin homes in there, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
So those aren't, and those aren't allowed anymore.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I wish we could do this, I wish they could get nine units on medium-density. So what happens when you go to high-density? What are the allowed units?
So, yeah, high-density, my understanding is anything greater than seven units an acre is kind of how we classify high-density in our code.
Okay.
I don't believe there's an upper limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, there's no voting tonight, it's just an introduction. So does anybody have any further questions on this? If there's no further questions, we will consider Plan Case 23-8, the ordinance rezoning Cedarwood, 9730 University Avenue. We'll consider that introduced. Okay, all right, thanks, Dakota. Item seven is to consider Resolution 23-1/12, adopting assessments for street reconstruction project 23-1. This is for approximately 4.5 miles of residential streets by reconstruction under project 23-1. We've already had the Mark Hanson show on this. Does anybody have any questions on this one? This one is kind of everything that is west of Shenandoah Boulevard between Main Street and 131st.
Your honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-1/12, adopting the assessments for street reconstruction project 23-1.
Second.
I have a motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscovia?
Streets in this area are pretty bad, and I know we've been taking a hard look at getting them cleaned up, so this is a good project. I would just make maybe one comment, and that is, seems like we should have done 131st from Shenandoah farther east, because that's in pretty rough shape, too. So it's probably gonna be on the radar for us pretty soon, just saying.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item eight is to consider a joint power agreements with Anoka County for traffic signal maintenance. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, council, you will be considering two joint powers agreements. One is an amendment to an existing agreement, and that is for the traffic signal on Foley and 99th. The second is a new one, and that is for this traffic signal actually right here on Robinson Drive and Hanson. These are being necessitated by the termination of existing agreements by MINDOT. So back when Highway 10, before the Hanson overpass was here, MINDOT had control over this, and before some of the other interchange worked down on Foley Boulevard, these were MINDOT responsibilities. Now they are no longer on the MINDOT jurisdictional roadways, they fall solely on Anoka County's. In Anoka County, they have standards to what their signals are, so the city's responsible for all the EVP, for the emergency vehicles, and we're responsible for the lighting, the street lighting component of them. The county is responsible for all other items. So this puts us in line with all of our other agreements with them. I think it's fair. One of the items is in rough shape, the Foley 99th needs some painting, so we've agreed to just split that cost. Primarily, we pay for it first time, they pay for it for the lifespan unless it's a special color, so it'll cost us probably three, four grand, the city, and also the county, it's probably a $6,000 to $8,000 deal. So these are just our typical agreements, I think they're fair. I would recommend that we approve both of these agreements, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer?
No, Mr. Mayor?
I think you started, Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the execution of Amendment Number One to the joint power agreement for the signal at Foley Boulevard and 99th Avenue, as well as the JPA for the signal at Hanson Boulevard and Northdale Boulevard, Robinson Drive.
Second.
We have a motion by Carlson, and we have a second by Geisler. Discussion?
I had the motion and you had the second.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Did you have something, Council?
I did, yes.
Novak, that's, I was distracted, I knew that we had a discussion point over here, sorry.
Mr. Hammer, just out of curiosity, as these streetlights are getting replaced, are any of them catching a left-turn yellow arrow?
Councilmember Novak, there's no proposed improvements as part of these signals, other than the painting on 99th, but all new traffic signals do look at that flashing yellow as an alternative and part of the design, as well as interconnect with other signals on the corridor.
That is good to know, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscovia?
Just a quick question, I understand that, you know, on these county roads like this, we share in the maintenance, the painting, I think you said, and the lighting and things like that, and that's pretty common with all the rest of it. But I'm wondering, since this termination of the agreement with the state, is the city picking up, is it, are we picking up a fiscal note on this now that the state's not doing it, or is it basically the same with a different JPA?
Boy, that's a great question, Councilmember Griscovia. Maybe Mr. Brody would be able to answer that. To me, ownership and maintenance, long-term, is the responsibility of Anoka County by these agreements. They are responsible to do all of the work. If they happen to change the lighting because the LED is burnt out, or it needs a new high-pressure sodium bulb, that gets charged back to the city on a quarterly basis. So if the cabinet's hit and has to get replaced, that's their responsibility. If the push buttons need replacement, that's their responsibility. They own it, they maintain it, we've just got a few items that we pay for quarterly as they are repaired, if they are repaired.
So in the past, the state of Minnesota, MINDOT, did the repairs to these and the maintenance, and going forward, it's gonna be Anoka County?
So Anoka County and MINDOT shared in those responsibilities before, so we're kind of assuming what the county's responsibility was on the Hanson one, and they're assuming what MINDOT's responsibilities were.
Okay, I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, the county has turned back some roads to us, right, where we take over, and so that adds to our, you know, general tax expenditures, is the same thing happening in this situation. And if so, we'll have to address it in the budget, I suppose.
If I may, I think maybe I have a better answer to your first question, and that is, there are two traffic signals in Coon Rapids that we are responsible for. That is the one by the Park and Ride on Crooked Lake Boulevard, and also the one we just installed a few years ago on Wedge Wood and Round Lake Boulevard. Those are solely 100% city-owned and maintained. All the rest of them fall under the ownership and responsibility of the county, with us picking up electricity and the EVP, I see. Okay.
And if it's one of the blue or the brown paints that the city requires?
That's correct. We would be responsible for those specialty colors. Previously with council direction, it's been, when that time comes, we pay for it one more time, goes back to the standard color, or they just do the galvanized, and we no longer pay for blues or browns or anything else.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer? Any other discussion on this item, I should say? Hearing none, we have a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. All right, item nine is to consider an agreement with Alina Health for the ambulance bay extension and the sewer extension project. These don't seem like they would be related projects, but...
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. There's a few things here, and as part of the ambulance bay expansion project, Mercy had requested some pedestrian crosswalks. There's also one step that encroaches out into the public right-of-way, we don't allow that from private entities, so they had requested to be allowed to do that at their sole cost, at their ownership, at their liability, their maintenance. However, one thing that got triggered from the last expansion was that any future expansion at the hospital would necessitate a larger sanitary sewer. The existing sewer in Dakota Street was becoming capacity, was reaching capacity. So even though this may seem small, it's just a small little area, the agreement previously was future expansion would necessitate that. As opposed to going out into Dakota Street and upsizing that line all the way down to 115th, where then it expands from an eight-inch to a 12-inch, I believe, they came up with the idea to just run a service parallel to Dakota right along their own property, running north-south, and then discharge that into the manhole at 115th, and that's where it increases in size and capacity. We thought that was a great solution, we wouldn't have to go out into Dakota Street, except the existing manhole there was built in the 60s, and I wasn't comfortable attaching a new service into an old line. So what we propose in this agreement is the city would pick up the cost for the manhole, it's $10,000, it's been estimated out, we pick up the cost of that, they're constructing everything that's there, the city would then own the last stick of that pipe from the manhole onto the property. And that's no different than any other property where we would stub a service line out to that edge. It's contained within existing easements already, we don't need to do anything with that, so we thought we'd tie both things up into one agreement for your consideration. So I would recommend approval, and again, I'm always happy to answer questions.
Excellent. Mr. Hammer, did they get a handle on the stuff that used to come through that sewage line, like sheets and things?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have a nice grinder pump in there, they even have a backup pump which sits on the facility, so if the first one goes down... The beauty of this now is that grinder pump goes onto this private service line and doesn't connect directly out. So anything that happens will now be in that parallel service line and not occurring out on Dakota Street for us.
Bonus.
Yes.
Nice. All right, anybody have any more questions of Mr. Hammer?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the attached agreement with Alina Health for the ambulance garage expansion and sanitary sewer extension.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Rayrower. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscovia?
Just to make a point, that I, we've seen this before over and over again, but Alina is just a stellar community partner for us, and this is another example of that going to this depth to have this done, so. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, which is to consider an agreement with Treely Terrace Homeowners' Association for the Palm Street water main replacement project. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I'll let you know that this also goes with item number 11, one is for the project and one is for the agreement. I'll just point out that we've had considerable breaks on the existing six-inch ductile iron pipe that's contained within this area. It's a private association, so the roadways and all the landscaping and driveways, all of that is privately owned and maintained. The water main underneath it is a public responsibility. So anytime we have a water main break, not only do we have to fix the water main, but we also have to put their landscaping and their driveways and garages and all that stuff back in order. We've had, I want to say, maybe it's in the thing here, I think we've had, we had two within the span of two weeks, and probably three or four over the past three or four years. So we're at a point now where there's restoration that needs to occur from one that occurred over the winter, and so Mr. Hanson actually negotiated with the association. Typically, we are responsible for that main, the homeowners are responsible for everything out to the curb stop. When these were built, the curb stops were built right up next to the units themselves. So basically, our responsibility goes all the way to the garage slabs, almost. So with this project, not only will we replace the public water main through the trunk, but we'll also run new services into their properties at no cost to the association. And in exchange for that, they'll take over the ownership of the full length of that main, as well as all of those services in perpetuity. So I commend Mr. Hanson for working this out, I appreciate the association for understanding the value in that. It then eliminates our responsibility, again, going into the future of having to fix private improvements that we have no say, we don't plow the streets. I believe this to be a good deal. We have lots more of these in the community all over the place, and with the aging infrastructure, I'm hoping this may be an opportunity for us to consider that going forward. We'll negotiate those if and when the time comes, but for now, I would recommend we approve this agreement, as well as the construction contract that's coming up next, and I will answer any questions you have.
Questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscovia?
Just to try to make sure I understand this, we're gonna rebuild this and then convey that water main over to the homeowners' association. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, under this agreement, they would be responsible for ownership and maintenance.
So going forward, if there's a problem with that water main, the city has no liability and won't need to fix it?
We come in, we turn off the valves on either end, it isolates the line, and they're responsible to repair anything in between.
So how does that work, that they're, I mean, they're buying water from us, so they're paying a water utility fee, but then if something breaks, they have to pay for it for themselves? I'm just kind of wondering about that. And as a homeowners' association, do they have the wherewithal, do they have the financial ability to go in there and fix a water main if it breaks?
Yeah, Councilmember Scoviac, private developments occur all over. We have some in the city, they're in several locations. So the board ruled on this, they discussed it, they agreed, their maintenance, so they would just have to adjust their budget accordingly.
It just seems like a good deal for us, right? I mean, we have to replace this anyway, it's already ours, it's under the street, we're gonna get it done, and then we basically have no further liability. It's just a little bit unique in my experience with the city, but if you say it's been done in other parts of the city, and that's just the way we do it, then I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify.
I'll just add, we haven't done this agreement before anywhere else in the city. There are private developments where they're responsible for all ownership and maintenance of all the utilities, all the roadways, everything. Then there are some where we have the utilities and they have the roadways. The benefit to the association is the less of the inconvenience for us and the continuous. So fixing it once and for all, we can go in and slip line, we can keep doing repairs, and we can keep having breaks occur. So the inconvenience for them, not to mention access to their homes, it, there are several more like this that are gonna be coming, and if we can do same or similar, I think this helps us, but yes, there are private developments that are solely responsible, that's just in their bylaws, it's in their budget, and they have to plan for it.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask that question, and you kind of already answered it, but to summarize, the benefit for them is that we're fully replacing this with really high quality in hopes that they're not gonna have to deal with this breaking and these inconveniences. And then in return for this full replacement, high-quality, then they fix it down the road, right?
Correct.
I don't think it says high-quality. Overselling here a little bit.
Everything we do, Mr. Mayor, everything we do.
I know what we do is good quality.
So like, the other private streets we've got in town, I was gonna talk about my other business, and I still am, but, all right, so let's go to like the townhome development on the north end of Wexford, the one where the gate, the gate was the issue for a long time, because those are private streets. So are we responsible for the water and sewer under those private streets that they own?
I couldn't tell you for sure today for that specific development.
Okay.
I mean, we have a hodgepodge, and that's a project I'm currently working on, is, do we have easements, are they planted? There's a whole lot of research going into that right now. We have mains that go through the Cub parking lot over there, but is that a city sewer line? So if we go and, there's a whole lot of discrepancy on public-private ownership, and so I couldn't tell you a specific one today.
And is there, is there a method, is there a way for us? Homeowner associations are at the will of the association, maybe, you know, if they got money or not. If their water main breaks, is there a way for us to repair it and assess them if they authorize that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that there's a mechanism within ordinance, however, we have done some things in the past where they sign the waiver of assessment, they agree to the costs, in some instances, we let them go get their, you know, you bid it, you do all the work, we just can maybe be a financing. Mr. Brody might be able to answer that one a little better, but there is some flexibility in how we do that, as long as they would agree to not appeal any assessments or waive their right to appeal an assessment.
Your honor? Just real quick question before we go to Mr. Brody. At one point in time, Coon Rapids had a housing improvement area loan program that associations and such could apply for. Does Coon Rapids still have something like that?
It's a state statute, and I think it's still good through like 2028, and that's usually initiated by the, by the townhome association themselves. We haven't had a project, it's probably been four or five years since the last time we had a project, but yes, as far as I know, that that program is still available. I know there's sort of limitations on what that money can be used for, I don't know if we've ever done like a water main project or water lines, but that probably would be in there, we've done rough siding, all kinds of things over the years.
Theoretically, if the association couldn't afford it immediately, they could apply for something like that in order to get those funds.
Sure. Basically, we're the bank for the association.
Except if they've got a broken water main, they're not gonna want to take time to go through all those hoops.
That's true. It is a lengthy process. It is a lengthy process.
Possibly to recoup some of those funds.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Am I missing somewhere? What is this going to cost the city to do this?
That's the next item on the agenda for the contract consideration. They go together. So if you're not going to consider that contract, then don't consider this agreement. It's $167,000, I believe. Yes.
All right. Very good. Do we have a motion on this? We don't?
No.
Your honor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Treely Terrace Homeowners Association for water main replacement between the addresses of 9802 and 9824 Palm Street.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskovjak?
Being that this is kind of the first agreement like we're going to be doing with this, you know, Mr. Brody and Legal, you guys have gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. Have you compared it to what other cities are doing, other associations? I just...I feel a little apprehensive about this one. I want to make real sure about my vote.
We did review it, obviously, with Mr. Hanson. We've spent some time on it because of the uniqueness of it and understanding what it did, what we're accomplishing out of it, because it was pretty unique. And if it does come up in the future, it probably would be a template for our future projects as well. So I am comfortable moving forward. Otherwise, we went to brought it to council. We didn't compare it to other cities. I'm not sure if other cities have done similar things like this. But like I said, I feel like it accomplishes what we're looking for. Sort of makes sense. If we think about this, if we were doing this development today, this is how it would be set up today. You know, I'm assuming Mr. Hammer can correct me, but that would be our intent. And so we're kind of putting it back to where we probably would have done it under today's standards, where they would own it from the main end. It would be their responsibility. So I feel comfortable with it. They're agreeing to it as well. And that's the other thing. We're not...this isn't an agreement between us and the townhome association. Not something we're forcing on them.
So it makes perfect sense for me to have those water, you know, the service from the townhome to the water main be private. But being have the main being private, I still...how can I say this? If we approved this tonight, the mayor's going to sign this agreement tonight, and it's a done deal. Right? I mean, it just...it seems like a really good deal for the city. I mean, but it might not be the best deal for the homeowners association. I just, long-term, so...
But the homeowners association is the...they want it, so...
Sure.
They're not responsible for...
Yeah, I get that, but the homeowners association isn't, you know, as deep as a city or anything like that either. Just thinking about future issues for those homeowners inside that homeowners association. I just...I guess I should have maybe asked for more information before the meeting on this one. But I still am apprehensive on it.
The system that's in there, Mr. Hammer, is what, 40 years, do you think?
I don't know off the top of my head. If you give me a minute or two, I could...
I was trying to remember when that development went in. I mean, obviously, sometime after the drive-in went out. Okay. Well, all right. Well, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. One opposed. Councilmember Guskovjak. Item 11 is to consider construction contract for Palm Street Water Main Replacement Project 23-6. Now that we have the agreement, we should probably make sure we get the work done, huh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we solicited two quotes for this work. The low bidder was Dave Perkins Contracting in the amount of $168,888.
Yep.
I was pretty close with $167. And I would recommend we proceed with the project.
Yeah, and this is where it says there were three mainline water main breaks between 22 and 23. I knew that I had read that somewhere, and I couldn't find it anywhere. All right. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Hammer on this?
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
We approve the attached construction contract with Dave Perkins Contract Incorporated for the Palm Street Water Main Replacement Project and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskovjak?
I know I just voted no on the association agreement for what I think are good reasons, but this is something that a city would have to do anyway. This has to be done. So regardless of my vote on the prior one, I support, you know, this infrastructure being updated.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are up to the open-mic portion. We did have one person here. But now we don't have anybody. So nobody here to address counsel for open mic? I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and that moves us to other business. And under other business, I just wanted to mention, when we were talking about private roadways, we're talking about some of the biggest potholes in town are in those private roadways and private parking lots. And but when people are driving around, it all becomes just part and parcel. It's Coon Rapids. And boy, I just...I would like to point out, look at...figure it out, because there's a lot of streets that are really rough, that are not ours. Have they done anything with that one between...next to Kane, I wonder? That's always terrible.
My understanding is they've at least filled them, and they have a proposal to reconstruct the roadway. It now just becomes getting the funding in place to do that. There doesn't seem to be a whole good history on ownership and responsibility with it.
You know, I don't know. That one really doesn't seem like a good fit as a private road, because it's so used by so many people in the area. And it cuts from there over to our street. You know, from a county road to one of our streets, it doesn't seem like a good private road option.
I've spoken to all the businesses up there except for one. And, you know, they're working together to solve it. And I said, you know, one of your solu...you could always petition us to take it over as public. I won't guarantee you that that's what we would do, but it seems to meet our criteria, as long as the setbacks and all the other things are in place. That is an option for you to consider. You just have to get together and request that. Maybe it'll come, maybe it won't.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskovjak?
On that subject, I know we patched a lot of our potholes with that, like you guys said, cold patch, that black kind of sandy stuff that doesn't seem to stay in those potholes for very long. So it's kind of out. Does the city keep a record of where we cold patched? And then do we go in and fix those? Or do we wait for our residents to report the potholes reappeared? Does that happen with street cleaning, or how do we kind of...
Yeah, Councilmember Guskovjak, we drive the city daily. Not me personally, Josh Peterson and his staff, certainly. We don't get into, you know, is it a cold patch or is it not? We can just look at the work orders and determine when they were patched and know that that's the case. But we wouldn't go out and remove the cold patch just to put in some hot mix. So yes, we would ask that if something has deteriorated, we would ask for that. But other than that, through the recon and now with the crack sealing and seal coating and all the other maintenance activities that are going on, we got turf damage from winter plowing. That's occurring right now. So we're out on these streets quite a bit. And anything else that materializes, we'll put that on and take care of it as well.
Appreciate it.
Excellent. Something that I noticed a lot around town right now, temporary signs. They're popping up everywhere for painting, junk hauling, "We'll buy your house." You know, those are all...unless they are in your own yard, they're an illegal sign. And I was driving last night, and I went, do I start picking them up? Because there's so many, and I thought, I don't want to drive over to Public Works and drop them off. I'm going to leave them right now, but...
And Mayor, Counsel, our property maintenance staff will pull those signs. Obviously, yes, it is the time of year where they proliferate, and it's hard to keep up. Eventually, we'll get around and pull them. I know I've pulled some around my neighborhood, not in my neighborhood, but on university or whatever for painting and things. Someone plops one in the park, things like that. So they're out there. We'll try to catch up to them when we can, but it's a little bit tricky right now.
Yeah. I mean, even, you know, in real estate, you can't put a sign out there that says, "There's a home for sale" down there in Coon Rapids. We allow temporary open house signs, not by ordinance. We just sort of just ignore them because they're temporary by nature. But every time you see those signs put out on the corner of somebody else's property, "House for sale down here," it's like, no, just stop. You know, everybody knows it's for sale. They've got the MLS, you know. All right. Other business. Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, so we've got a couple of really big things coming up on Saturday. So the kids' fishing clinic at the Coon Rapids Dam, that's from 9:00 AM to noon. So if you've got kids and you want to teach them to fish, it's a great opportunity for them to get out there. Hopefully, it will not be too cold or snowy. Starting to see some warm weather. And then also on Saturday, at the Bunker Hills Activity Center, is the Fix-It Clinic. And that goes from 10:00 AM to 1:00. So if there's things that are broken and you need to get fixed, we've got the Fix-It Clinic.
Bunker Hills Activity Center?
Mayor, Counsel, that's the county building off of Bunker Lake Boulevard on the north end of the property.
Yeah. Well, it's not even in Coon Rapids. That's what I was trying to figure out. Why was it up there?
More space, I suppose.
All right. Okay. Well, that's an important distinction then, because, yeah, I didn't... I would never would have known that it was up there, at Bunker Hills Activity Center. All right. Okay. Yeah, and it's actually supposed to be nice. The weather's supposed to be warm on Saturday, but they're predicting rain, so we'll see how that goes.
Well, hopefully, we'll hold off. The kids can, you know, fish in the sunshine, and then you can go up and get your things fixed if it's raining, because that's inside.
Mr. Hammer, do you know if they did that river cleanup last Wednesday morning, the 26th, from 9:00 to noon? Does anybody know if they did that?
I don't know.
Because that river was moving, man, and still really high.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilmember Carlson?
It was a lovely day. The instructions were pretty few. Don't fall in the river. Pick up as much as you can. Anyway, it was great. It was a really fun event. They're talking about maybe doing another one this fall when the river's down.
It should be down before then.
It was a great event. About 40 volunteers.
Oh, nice.
It was a great time.
Nice. Very good. Thank you for showing up.
Oh, yeah. It was fun.
All right. Other business to come before counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I want to just spend a minute just to recognize one of our residents, Diane Busta, longtime resident, great volunteer. My goodness, she gives more hours than anyone else that I know. About 15 years ago, Diane Busta bought a raccoon mascot costume to be used by the city of Coon Rapids. And so the Rocky that we've seen at our different events was actually purchased and owned by Diane Busta. She was just kind enough to loan it to us for these events. And we're going to be rebranding this summer with a different Rocky. And so we can have two different Rockies. And so Diane is kind enough to donate the Rocky that we've had for 15 years to Coon Rapids, Iowa. And just big shout-out. Big shout-out to Diane, and Coon Rapids, Iowa, thanks you.
And that was personally delivered, wasn't it?
Tomorrow, Mr. Mayor, Rocky and my wife and some friends and I are going for a road trip. Going on Coon Rapids, Iowa tomorrow morning.
Okay. That's awesome. Yeah, nope. Diane's a great supporter. I mean, the float, the parade float. I went, that's a nice trailer under there. No, that's Diane's. All right. Other business to come before counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Well, we've all been enjoying this balmy weather and looking forward to spring. Just giving a quick shout-out to the Girls Fast Pitch Association, Coon Rapids Fast Pitch Association. They're already playing ball at Aspen Park.
Nice.
So when we're complaining about things, think about taking a fast pitch off a metal bat in 45-degree temperatures. So get out to Aspen Park and support the girls' fast pitch softball.
All right. Other business to come before counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.